Thank you for joining us for the Las Cruces Municipal Election Debates. I'm Fred Martino and I'm joined in this program by Leslie Cervantes. She's the Chair of the Greater Las Cruces Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for being with us.
Thanks for having me, Fred. Thank you.
It's good to have you here and it's always good to have the Chamber as a partner in our local programming. This evening, we are going to be talking with all of the candidates for Las Cruces City Council in three different races. And in one race, the candidates for municipal judge. And we begin in numerical order in District 3. The candidates are incumbent Olga Pedrosa and challenger Bev Courtney. Thank you very much for being with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our questions will be, a response to our questions, rather, will be one minute in length, except for the first question, which will have a two-minute maximum response. And the first question comes from Leslie.
Thank you, Fred. We'll begin with you, Ms. Pedrosa.
Sure.
What are the top three priorities for the city of Las Cruces?
Okay. I think the top three priorities would be, number one, making sure that, in fact, we are able to increase the grocery receipts tax by three-eighths of 1 percent. It is, in fact, a small amount despite a lot of noise about it. And it will allow the city to expand, or at least continue, with the level of services that we are providing. In the last few years, because of the economy, our services and our departments have all tightened their belts. And if we do not raise this amount of taxes, then we will, over the long run, lose a lot of services. I think that we, with the limited budget that we have now, we cannot afford to lose any more services. These are very, very vital to the health, security, and safety of the people in Las Cruces. We cannot afford to cut police. We cannot afford to cut fire. We cannot afford to cut services to job holders who need to have the after-school programs for their children. We cannot afford to cut meal services for seniors who are unable to get out of their homes. We cannot afford to cut services for the library. In other words, we are already at a very, very limited budget. And not being able to do that would require very harmful and hurtful cuts in services.
And now, Bev Courtney, your response to the question of the top three priorities for the city of Las Cruces.
Okay. I was born and raised in America, and I've always enjoyed the freedom to make my own choices. And so, I've always had faith in our representative form of government. And to my dismay, I have, in the last decade or so, discovered that there's a lot of roadblocks to our representative form of government. So here, at the city level, I would like to be, represent the people in my community. So I want to just be responsive to their needs and to whatever, you know, their concerns are. And so, in my district, I have a lot of low income, fixed income. It's an older neighborhood, so I think that the taxes have been very harmful to them. It takes money out of their pockets, puts it in the government's pockets, and it takes less control of their own lives, puts it into the government, because money represents power. And so, they can't afford to be double taxed, the whole hold harmless tax. The state passed those taxes to us also, just, they took it from Food and Pharmacy and put it, you know, fees, registrations, that sort of thing. And so, I want to be service-oriented and listen to the people. I don't want to keep taxing them, because I also think that slows down our economy. And I think that the city needs to stick with priorities. There's a lot of redundancy in the budget, and there's first things first, fire, water, safety, emergency, those sorts of things.
Okay. For the remainder of the questions in our debates for this District 3 race, we will have a one-minute response. And our second question, we begin with Bev Courtney. With deficit reductions in the works, federal funding will likely be much more competitive in the future. If you are elected, how will you try to ensure that Las Cruces receives the most federal funding it can?
Well, is that what the people want? Because federal funding comes along with strings attached and takes away local autonomy. I think we should drive the local economy with being business-friendly. There are projects here in the community. There's Susana Governor Martinez has promoted this train station down at Santa Teresa, and that should do a lot for driving the community in the state of New Mexico, not just Las Cruces, and open up jobs. Driving the economy. I think if you let people get rid of bureaucracy, too, that will help. They'll have private property, and they will be able to do more with it as they please.
Olga Pedrosa.
Sure. First, I have to just object. The one minute is even shorter than the League of Women Voters who gave us a minute and a half. Nevertheless, our federal funding was something we talked about today in our work session. And we learned that a lot of the senior programs depend on federal funding and some do not. Those that depend on federal funding are going to continue. Those that do not, we're going to be hustling and trying to find money to keep those up. And I mentioned some of them, but I will mention one more in the short time that I have. One of my constituents is a man whose wife has Alzheimer's disease. There is a state, city program that gives him a little bit of respite. He, somebody goes into his home twice a week to sit with his wife and help her, but he does not feel safe. And, oh, goodness, one minute.
Okay. Leslie.
Okay. Ms. Pedrosa?
Yes, ma'am.
What do you consider to be the single most important issue to the constituents in your district?
The single most important issue? If you talk about their point of view, from their point of view, it is the street maintenance. I would say that four out of five of the phone calls, I guess, are about the paving, the striping, and so on. But in fact, I think that that is possibly a shortsighted view of the problem. I think that, in fact, the problem is much broader than that. The problem is the education, the jobs for the young people growing up. And those, even though the older adults may not see those as the problems, are, in fact, the biggest problems facing not only my district, but all the other districts in the city.
Bev Courtney.
Would you mind repeating the question?
Of course. Certainly. What do you consider to be the single most important issue to the constituents in your district?
Taxes. We have that double taxation. We have one of the highest taxes in the state, the municipality. We, it's over 8 percent. And that hold harmless tax is going to be phased out over 15 years. And the city, I don't know what their hurry is to get more taxation and what their plans are for it. But you take it out of the people's pockets, they're going to have less money to go to school, to buy goods and services, to provide for their families. It's, you know, detrimental. The taxes, basically, it's double taxation, because we already have been paying the state those same taxes. Now it looks like the city is going to sue the state.
Earlier, we talked about the challenge of maintaining federal funding. State funding is also a challenge. What are some priorities Las Cruces should fight for when it comes to state funding? And we begin with Bev Courtney.
The border security, I think, is a pretty big issue. I have been to the border security conference that was held by retired border police and local law enforcement. And, you know, that gang violence is tied to the drug trade. And so, if you take the property that's, that certain people in the community want to turn it into a national monument, I think, like 600,000 acres, that is a serious issue for our community, because that just opens it up to criminal activity and takes it away from the people, puts it in the hand of the government, and no law enforcement out there. And just like in Arizona, it happened that they have just tons of trash and drug trafficking. Serious problem.
Olga Pedrosa.
Sure. Thank you very much. I think one of the very important issues is the fact that our behavioral health providers have been defunded. I read in the Las Cruces Sun News yesterday, I believe it was, that, in fact, there was, the release of documents that has been had shows that, in fact, there was no apparent fraud on the part of the behavioral health providers. Nevertheless, our governor had, prior to coming up with this report, she had already contacted the Arizona providers and found ways to bring them in. I was very, very disturbed by that because of the harm that it does, not only to the families, but also to the people themselves who require the mental health services. I think that that state funding is extremely detrimental.
Thank you, Fred. My next question. Do you support the increase in grocery receipts tax? Why or why not? Ms. Pedrosa?
Thank you, Leslie. Yes, I do. And I think that it is because the grocery receipts tax is not a double taxation at all. A few years ago, Governor Bill Richardson had cut the tax on food and medicine, because at that point, the state and everybody else was fairly comfortable in terms of monies. And so, he said, well, we can give everybody a break and eliminate the tax on food and medicine. But a lot of the municipalities, and we are one of them, who depend on the grocery receipts tax for all of our service provision, said, wait a minute, you can't do this. You're going to be taking 10 percent or more of our budget, of our operating budget. The governor then said, oh, don't worry, we will hold you harmless, we will give you that money. Now, the Governor Martinez has said, well, we're not longer going to give that to you. It will be a cut to our services.
Bev Courtney.
There's, I am definitely opposed to the tax. It is double taxation, because the state passed those taxes on to us anyway. And they, it didn't even run out for a year and a half, and they're already wanting to put it, implement it in January. They missed making the rules just right with the state taxation revenue department. So they held a special meeting, and the state's not moving fast enough, so now they are suing. Well, the voters just rejected a tax, to raise taxes in July, just July this year. And as soon as they did that, the city's raising the taxes. They're not listening.
Las Cruces has many medians and areas along roadways that are unfinished. These range from high-profile areas like Lomen, just east of Tellurium, to subdivisions. How do you see this issue, and how would you address it if elected? And we begin with Bev Courtney.
It's priorities. There are certain things that, if you have a budget, that must be taken care of that are not an option. So our city streets and our infrastructure are not an option. You take care of those, and you budget for them first, and then everything else follows after, amenities, social issues, or social services. I like social services when you can afford them. You take care of the needy and the helpless first. But, so that's priority, just like I understand that the city water system is old and dated. And so, we are past the cost of the water, although the citizens only use 10 percent of the water that is, that we have in the valley. And how much is leaking from the city? That's a priority.
Olga Pedrosa.
This afternoon, at the work session, we had a report, and this was a work session, no decisions were made, but we had a report about the medians and all of the, how to deal with the traffic problems, the safety concerns, and so on, that we have because of the ingress and egress out of shopping areas and so forth. I guess, along places like, for instance, El Paso, where you have a lot of curb cuts and people are coming in and out of parking lots, that presents a danger to the public. And so, we were talking about how to address that. It's very complicated. I am absolutely sure that the traffic engineers, and Robert Kyle was the one who presented, they are going to be working very, very hard on this.
Okay. Thank you.
My question goes back to the grocery receipts tax. Assuming that the grocery receipts tax increase goes into effect, what would you recommend be done with the funds collected? Ms. Pedrosa?
Sure. First of all, I think that it's important to see that regardless of whether we get the grocery receipts tax increase or not, the city is going to be losing money. But right now, we're trying to stock up a little bit of a stockpile, so that we can use it and not totally be at the mercy of a cut positively 8 to 10 percent of our budget. I have a real, particular, personal thing that I would like to do. I don't know whether it's going to happen or not. But I would like to take some of the, a little tiny bit of extra that we're going to have and use it to fund recycling, water reclamation plants throughout the city, small ones, not the big monster ones, but the small ones, that can then turn over the reclaimed water for use in schools, in baseball parks, in parks, and so on.
Bev Courtney.
Well, it's back to priorities. You're going to have to take care of your infrastructure. Start repairing the antiquated system with the water department, because they penalize us for leaks. I really had problems. I paid like an extra $500 because the old sprinkler system in my yard leaked and I didn't realize it. I paid for that the whole year. So the city can't penalize me for something they're not taking care of. So they need to take care of updating our systems. David Rowey's in District 5. They have dirt roads, gravel roads with, you know, nice houses. They're having some issue with impact fees. I don't know why there's any controversy, because that's something that goes on in city communities with building and growing that's, you know, as old as the country. There's got to be models that work.
Las Cruces has some high-profile construction projects that have been inactive for years, leaving unfinished buildings, including in high-profile areas like Main Street near Amador and across from Mountain View Medical Center. How do you see this issue, and how would you address it if elected? Bev Courtney.
Is it city buildings?
No.
Private.
They are unfinished buildings, unfinished construction projects.
Hmm. I wouldn't, I'd have to get advice, if it's private-owned and it's not violating any zoning, you know, zone codes or zoning laws, statutes. Would encourage them to go ahead and finish building. It's probably embarrassing for them not to finish a job that they started, so, but I'd have to get counsel. I'd have to look at each, each one and look at, you know, what's involved and who's involved in those sorts of things, just generally, I don't know.
Olga Pedrosa.
Sure. I think that the city is very, very interested and concerned with the construction projects, in particular, in the downtown area. I am also very encouraged by the fact that there are some construction projects that are going forward. I think that the lofts right across, right next door to the Sun News are going to bring a lot of life and vitality to the downtown area. The rebirth of the old office center, I don't remember, it's on Amador, and it is going to be, it's in negotiation or has already been sold to the Clinica, La Clinica de Familia. And that will bring a large health providing entity to Las Cruces, right next to the downtown, right across the street from the multimodal transportation center. I think that will be a huge boost for all of the construction and all of the city.
Thank you. My last and final question related to grocery receipts tax. As a follow-on to that question, what ideas do you have to develop a process for determining how the funds are expended? Ms. Pedrosa.
Okay. Thank you. I think the city already has process. We work on the budget a couple of times. A strategic plan is coming up, I believe, in December. So we will be, everybody in the city will be meeting together to see what priorities and what projects need to be pushed forward a little bit more aggressively. Obviously, if we do anticipate, if the grocery receipts tax is imposed either in January or in July, we will have to plan for that and make the very, very best use of it that we can. My personal preference is in services, so I would look to some of those services. And right now, the only ones I can think of are the ones like the Alzheimer's respite care, so that the people who take care of their relatives who have Alzheimer's will have someplace to go and be able to feel free and safe, that their partners are safe while they are taking a break.
Bev Courtney.
I don't think that you should raise taxes unless you already have a defined need. They had a bond for the 911 center, and so, they've already got that paid for. The fire and the police department, perhaps? I, I don't know. I think if they're going to get this tax, they should have already told us what it's for. If you take taxes from the people, you're going to slow down the economy. So if you have extra money, you should use it to encourage businesses and encourage people to be enterprising, so that they can bring jobs to the community. We do have unemployment, pretty high unemployment. And so, you want to have a view of getting people working.
Thank you.
How should Las Cruces be planning for population growth with a limited water supply? Bev Courtney.
Well, there's other communities that are doing the desalination plants, like Alamo Gordo and El Paso. So that's probably a long-term project. Should start searching out the issues and searching out the possibilities. You can do that, but you can also pipe water to where it needs to be. That's as old as history, is piping it from where they have water to where you need it. But also, agriculture uses 90 percent of the water. So you would have to look at the water that we're using now and put priorities on that.
Olga Pedrosa.
Thank you very much. Again, you've asked a very complicated question. You're absolutely right that water is in short supply. I don't think that you can, in fact, develop water unless you do something like the things that I was mentioning before, which is work on some kinds of projects to reclaim water and use it for whatever needs are non-potable, like the watering and the irrigation. Admittedly, that is an expensive project, but in the long run, it could indeed help us quite a bit. In terms of agriculture, I think that we are in for a very, very complicated process, because water law in itself is complicated. And I believe personally that the water law has to be changed. We'll go into more detail about that when we have more time, but the beneficial use and the prior appropriation and all of those things need to be finessed.
Thank you. Do you support a local increase in the minimum wage? If so, at what level of an increase? And what businesses should be impacted? Ms. Pedrosa?
Yes, I do support an increase in the minimum wage. I just gave a keynote speech the other day, and I reviewed the history. In 1950, and I'm going to be brief, in 1950, there was something called the Treaty of Detroit, because the UAW and General Motors reached an agreement. They had a no-strike clause for five years. They had automatic cost-of-living adjustments. They had annual improvement levels, and so on. And during that time, a lot of the other unions followed suit, and the poverty level in the United States fell to its lowest that it has ever been. It went down to 11.1 percent. The minimum wage is extremely important, so that people will have the money in their pockets to buy the things that drive our economy.
Thank you.
Bev Courtney.
Okay. Just one comment about the water. I think it's mostly a state issue, so...
Okay. The question is about minimum wage?
Minimum wage. Yes, I understand. I don't believe in the government dictating wage to private industry, private businesses. America's been founded and prospered under the free market, and I don't see any reason to change that. We've all had opportunities to do better for ourselves. So minimum wage typically is an entry-level job. And so, if somebody wants to earn more money, they are inspired to go to school, to work harder, to be indispensable, so that they can earn more money. And it takes profit from the businesses, so they're going to end up hiring less people. So I don't approve of it.
And we have time for one more question. As Las Cruces grows, there will be more pressure to approve new developments. The city zoning code calls for buffers between different types of development, like commercial and residential. However, sometimes the buffers are minimal at best. How do you see this issue, and how would you deal with it if you're elected? Bev Courtney.
Buffers, as in like open space, industry versus residential, quality of life, right? So you want people to have nice, quiet neighborhoods where they can raise their kids and have open space, like parks and sidewalks. And then, industry needs to be accessible to semi-trucks and things like that, so it makes common sense. Just follow common sense things. So you would put it, we're near the interstate. We have that industrial park out on the mesa. It's great. You can drive out there, and it's accessible, and it's not too far for people to drive to work, you know? And then you leave your neighborhoods quiet, less traffic, less noise, all those things.
Olga Pedrosa.
Thank you. Excuse me. I've heard of something called smart growth, and that is to plan a little bit better. I have not, in particular, heard of requiring buffers. I have heard more of making transportation accessible to people to get from their homes to their jobs. In particular, when the southern part of the county are developing, is developing so rapidly and so greatly, we're expecting humongous amounts of jobs and people working. I don't think that we need to be concerned so much with buffers as with the infrastructure to make people be able to go to those jobs and be able to afford it, to also have access to food, fresh groceries, and so forth, and possibly to have a... to food, fresh groceries and so forth, and possibly to have transportation, not only in terms of cars, but also in terms of bike lanes and walking areas.
Okay, and thank you to our District Three candidates, Olga Pedrosa and Bev Courtney.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
And we continue now with District Five in the city of Las Cruces for the council races, and the candidates are incumbent Gil Sorg and challenger David Rowey. Thank you both for being with us.
Thank you for having us.
All of the responses to the questions will be 60 seconds maximum, except for the first question. We have a two-minute maximum for that, and we begin with Leslie.
Thank you. Good evening. What are the top three priorities for the city of Las Cruces? Mr. Sorg?
Thank you. Top three priorities for the city of Las Cruces are better infrastructure. And in part of that better infrastructure are better streets, better parks, better quality of life in general. Those are the three things that I would like to see us improve. And with actions that the city council has taken in the last year, or two, or three, the city council has improved that. We've passed a park impact fee that has increased to the point where we have better parks. And we have also passed ordinance, we will be passing, I should say, ordinances that will improve our infrastructure, such as streets and drainage.
David Rowey.
Good afternoon, evening. My priorities are a little bit different. One, my first priority is to bring transparency and accountability to the council. Now, we just had a three-eighths of a percent income, our gross receipts tax increase. And from calculations that I received, it's an $80 million increase over what was being taken away by the state. We weren't told that, that nine and a half million dollars a year for the next two years that are gonna be collected were being put back into the city budget for use in next year and the year after. All of a sudden, we've got an $80 million tax increase, and we were lied to by the city council of why they were going to increase this tax. The purpose totally different. Secondly, I represent a district that's seven miles long, 20,000 people. We don't have a single soccer field, we don't have a single baseball field in the entire district. District Five is the bastard stepchild of the city. It's been ignored for too long. And my third issue is to complete Road Runner Boulevard. It's amazing, the city found the money to extend Sonoma Ranch from the hospital to the new high school, but they couldn't find the money to finish the roads within the districts that we represent. We've got some credibility problems, we have some problems with transparency, and we need some new blood and some new thought processes for the city of Las Cruces.
Thank you.
Our next question, with deficit reductions in the works, federal funding will likely be more competitive in the future. If you are elected, how will you work to ensure Las Cruces receives the most federal funding possible? We begin with David Rowey.
Federal funding is kind of a gift out there that we really shouldn't be expecting. You know, road dollars come in all the time. However, I have a problem with some of those road dollars that we've gotten recently, and that was the underpass on I-25. Beautiful, new underpass, but those road dollars that came in, we forgot to put an on-ramp and an off-ramp there. We have tremendous infrastructure problems on Elks and on Del Rey, and we didn't solve it. You know, if we're gonna get federal funds in, we need to be responsible and accountable to how they're spent. And we do that by being honest and transparent with the people of the city of Las Cruces.
Gil Sorg.
Thank you. Yes, the city does get federal funding for several different kinds of projects and things we do. One is the Community Development Block grant, and that has gone down in number of dollars that we've gotten from the federal government. The city doesn't get federal dollars for roads, per se, but we do get federal dollars for the highways that serve our city. And those are limited also. And they're limited because those are, those dollars come from the gas tax that the federal and the state gets. As our cars and trucks and so forth get better gas mileage, there's more vehicle miles traveled for the amount of gas tax we get. So the funding for that has gone down, as you said. So we're limited in what we can do with federal government funding, and so we'll do as much as we can. The underpass under I-25 has a plan to add ramps to it as soon as the funding comes available.
Thank you. My next question. What do you consider to be the single most important issue to the constituents of your district? Mr. Sorg?
As my opponent said, Road Runner, as well as other streets in this, in the district. You can count Elks Drive, you can count Del Rey, you can count Settlers Pass, you can also count, and on that Mesa Grande, as well as Porter, as well as other minor streets. And those are the most important parts. And we're gonna try to get funding to do those streets before the, they're, they're not finished because the developer didn't do it in the first place. And so we're gonna be getting, trying to get funding for that, those streets, to finish them off as soon as we can.
David Rowey.
I think transportation issues are our number-one concern. We have a number of major streets that all exit onto 70. We don't have another east-west corridor. And we experienced this a couple of years ago when we had the movie that was shot on 70. It was gridlocked when 70 was shut down. There's no alternative path. We have Settlers Pass, and we have Angler Road, but from Holman to I-25, it's, it's Highway 70 or Baton. We don't have those roadways. We don't have the infrastructure. And the city grabbed the land and wanted the annexation and the, the property tax dollars, but they didn't provide the services. And we have to start thinking about the safety of the people in District Five, and we haven't been.
Las Cruces has many medians and areas along roadways that are unfinished. These range from high-profile areas, like a long stretch of Lowman just east of Tell Shore to subdivisions. How do you see this issue and how would you address it if you're elected? Mr. Rowey.
Well, that's one of my pet peeves, because right now, all of those medians are being taken care of by the Parks Department. We have a serious deficit in dollars for parks. And so we've created pocket parks, and by city statute, by the movement of city council, they have mandated that these medians be put in, and then they're gonna take these medians over once they, the subdivisions are finished. Well, they're finished, and some of them are being worked on. Sonoma Ranch has been, done pretty well. My neighborhood hasn't been, but even Lowman. The city started this problem, and they got jammed up, and now they don't have enough money to finish it. It's poor planning. And that, again, comes back to transparency and accountability, but I don't see anybody from City Hall standing up saying it's, it's my responsibility, I'll take care of it. We don't have the money in parks to do the medians. We don't have money in the budget to do parks. I'm frustrated.
Mr. Sorg.
True. We don't have the money. We didn't have the money, I should say. As of last spring, in fact, this summer, the city council passed a resolution to increase the park impact fees from $800 per house to $2,600 per house. That should bring enough money to bring the level of service of parks up in the city, especially the East Mesa. And what we're, and it's true, we don't have these medians, and they're part of the park system. One problem with the medians is that we have, as city standards up to this point, irrigation that's necessary to put in there. And I told the city staff, well, let's have an option where we have totally zero scape. So I got funding for some medians already. Elks Drive and Del Rey is going to have some median landscaping done to it.
Thank you. Do you support the increase in the gross receipts tax? And if so, why? Mr. Sorg?
A very big question. We are not gonna be able to answer it in the time we have here tonight. The trouble with the gross receipts tax is what the state did to us, the state legislature, state government. They took away the hold harmless monies, funding that we have, which amounts to over 800, 8.5 million dollars a year at the moment, at the present time. We had to do something. We had to replace that 8.5 million. It's, it's at least 10% of our city's budget. So we decided to go ahead and do that and pass the three-eighths gross receipts tax increase because of the deficit we were about to receive from the state when they stopped the hold harmless. It's been said that we're gonna have 80 million dollars excess. That's not true. We're gonna be short a few million dollars once the 17 years are up.
I disagree with Councilor Sorg. We don't even start losing the money in hold harmless for another two years, and already we're gonna start collecting that $9 million in new taxes. And then every year, for the next 15 years, we lose 6.6%. So they reduce it in increments over this 15-year period. And all the meanwhile, we're still collecting that 9.5 million dollars in new taxes that the city just passed. They didn't say they wanted the extra money for roads or parks or anything else. They didn't say that they needed the money for anything except for the replacement of the hold harmless. And as a result, we have an $80 million tax bill that's just been dumped on us, and we relied about what they were doing. And I'm gonna call it lying because we were not told the truth of why they were increasing this as quickly as they were. And for the next two years, there's 18, 19 million dollars that's going right back into the general fund. That's not honest.
Las Cruces has some high-profile construction projects that have been inactive for years, leaving unfinished buildings in high-profile areas, including Main Street and on Lowman across from Mountain View Medical Center. How do you see this issue and how would you address it if you're elected? David Rowey.
You know, the market will bear what the market will bear. People invest in buildings, they invest in businesses because they're getting backed by a bank. And when their project, due to the economy or whatever circumstances it is, you know, there aren't many unfinished buildings. And there's a few, but very few. I think we have more vacant city buildings than we do unfinished commercial buildings out there. Normally, they're taken over fairly quickly, but I don't see this big backlog. Things are gonna happen. The market will take care of it. If it's gonna be foreclosed on, it'll be foreclosed on, and it'll be taken over by somebody else, just like a house is. And so the economy will, will take care of this thing, the market. We don't need the city involved in trying to find a solution for, for private business. I wanna get the city out of private business.
Mr. Sorg.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Las Cruces has some high-profile construction projects that have been inactive for years, leaving unfinished buildings in high-profile areas, including Main Street and across from Mountain View Medical Center. How do you see this issue and how would you address it if elected?
Well, it's pretty simple. Mr. Rowey has some, is correct that it's market-driven. Those buildings are market-driven. If, if the money was there to finish those buildings and the buildings would provide the service that that building was built for, then it would be built. And as you know, we've gone through the worst recession since the Depression in the last four years. And Las Cruces is not immune to that recession, and so that's why you won't see things being finished.
Thank you. Assuming that the gross receipts tax goes into effect, what would you recommend be done with the funds collected? Mr. Sorg?
Yes, the funds collected, as Mr. Rowey says, it will be extra to begin with, because we don't start losing our home hold harmless to begin with. We will be collecting extra money. Now, we can save that money in our reserve account in the city and save it for the out years when we will be running short of money, or we can invest that money. And I recommend that we invest it in our streets, the streets that we've mentioned here tonight, as well as maintaining the streets. Many streets in this city are very bad shape, and we need to do that. If we spend the money on the streets now, we will save money in the future, and that will have a better city in the meantime.
Mr. Rowey.
Oh, it's a tax-and-spend city council. They will spend every nickel we got. You know, the purpose of city government, when it was first formulated, was to provide public safety, roads, and parks. And right now, we have got so many different divisions and budget line items in the city that we have spread the money that comes in to things that really we shouldn't be spending money on. And we can go into detail about the budget. It's hundreds of pages long. I don't agree with the GRT tax, the way it was put together and the way it was implemented. And, you know, they broke state law, they broke state law when I applied to run for this office. We had all kinds of issues with not following the rules. City needs to be transparent, and they need to be accountable, and they haven't been.
How should Las Cruces be planning for population growth with a limited water supply? Mr. Rowey.
I'd like to know where your figures come from, a limited water supply. Now, I've heard this in the past, but I have not seen a document recently that says anything. I was involved in the 2040 planning process a couple of years ago, and the experts from the water resource areas, including New Mexico State University, said that we had a tremendous water, groundwater table that was here. It's virtually a lake between El Paso and goes all the way up past TRC. We're using less than 1/10th of 1% of the water, is what they told us at that time, and it has never become an issue. So now I hear this from not only this media, but radio medias as well, is we have a water shortage. No, we don't have a water shortage. Please prove it to me and show me the examples. We need to conserve water. We're in the desert, of course. But I don't wanna have, the sky is falling, bunch of crap that comes down and try to scare people because they think we don't have water. I think this is wrong.
Mr. Sorg.
Yes. I can understand why water is an issue here. We've gone through the worst drought here in many, many years, and you can see the river is dry. It only flows a month or a little over a month a year. And so I can understand why people feel water is an important issue to discuss, especially with the growing population. Therefore, I have put together a program that the city of Las Cruces and the Utilities Department is going to provide to the public this coming Thursday night, 30th, at City Hall, in which we are going to talk about water. We're getting the experts from the area here, and we're gonna talk about all the aspects of our water situation. We do have some water. It's, it's a situation now where we're mining the water in the ground. It's not being replaced as fast as we're taking out, but we need to plan ahead. And the city of Las Cruces Utilities Department does have a 40-year water plan.
Thank you. My last question related to gross receipts tax. What ideas do you have to develop a process for determining how the funds will be expended? Mr. Sorg?
A process for how the funds will be, they will go into the general budget, and that general budget is planned out every year by the city staff. And that's the way we'll, we'll be doing it. If the city council wants to have that money saved in a reserve, the city council, the money will be saved in reserve. If the money needs to be spent on some investment in the city, then the money will be spent that way, too.
Thank you.
Mr. Rowey.
There is a budget, and that budget has gotta be followed. If we implement the GRT right now, we have to replace the tax dollars that we're losing from the state, for simple and clear. If we want to increase the GRT, which is really the smart thing to do, fine, increase it in such a manner that we get more volume of dollars flowing into the community, where we have more expenditures, where we have more dollars flowing in that create more GRT, not creating new taxes. But we've not had a business-friendly climate in this city for some time, and it's even like a new house. A new house that's built brings in about $14,000 a year, or $14,000 in GRT just to construct one house. And if we're building 400 houses a year, we're bringing in about 500, or $5 million a year in new, in new taxes. or five million dollars a year in new, in new taxes. Do we pat businesses on the back and encourage them to expand here? Yes, I think that's what we need to do.
Las Cruces has been expanding city attractions from an indoor aquatic center to a new museum downtown. How do you see this priority? And how would you approach it if you are elected? Mr. Rowey?
You know, I think one of the finest things that we could do, and this has been discussed for some time, is we have an underground waterway that goes from the convention center all the way down to Water Street downtown. That's why they named it Water Street. And that's where EBID has underground facilities that stores water year-round. You can see the trenches out there. Why don't we create something in the city that's different? Why not a river walk like San Antonio? Something that attracts people in and then put also a hotel at the convention center? Start moving people back and forth from downtown to the convention center, the university district where all the restaurants are. We don't have any restaurants in downtown. But find new ways, think out of the box, use the, the assets that we have in the city to create something new.
Mr. Sorg?
Repeat the question, please.
Las Cruces has been expanding city attractions from an indoor aquatic center to a new museum downtown. How do you see this priority? And how would you approach it if you're elected?
Well, let me address this waterway. It sounds pretty grand. I don't know how well it's going to work, but we do have planned in the downtown partnership with the business down there to have a short greenway along that irrigation ditch, where we're going to have some, some kind of water features along the way. It's not quite as, doesn't quite go all the way to the convention center, but it does, we, that is in the plan for the downtown. Other features possibly, I, I come back again, we need to have good infrastructure first. Then we can think about these other things, that are amenities like we have in the city, such as the aquatic center. But if we were going to get to that point, if we ever get to that point, I would like to see an Olympic-sized pool there at the aquatic center. That's just one idea.
Thank you. Do you support a local increase in minimum wage? And if so, to what level? And what, which businesses should be impacted? Mr. Sorg?
Thank you. The minimum wage in the United States has been raised over thirty times since it first started. This is nothing new. We have a deficit between the rich and the poor, discrepancy, excuse me, between the rich and poor, that has gotten worse over the last thirty years in this country. The rich are getting richer, the poor are getting poorer, the poor are growing in numbers, and the middle class is losing its buying power. We need to do something about that. One way the governments can do it is by raising the minimum wage. I would like to see us look into that, see if we can't help our economy by increasing the minimum wage. But I'm willing to talk to the businesses and see how we can do it the best way.
Thank you.
I do not support the minimum wage. I think that's crap. Why does a city think it's got any right to tell a business how to operate? If you increase minimum wage and you have to pay your people a couple of dollars more per hour, that's going to result in an increase in cost to the product. So, it's going to get passed on. So, you know, it's, it's an artificial little blip that we do, and it makes a lot of people feel good, but it doesn't really do anything. If I, a starting person on any business doesn't know what they're doing, they have to be trained. And usually, that takes six months to a year. Once that person gets trained and is productive and is making money for that company, they're going to get merit raises. And we do things on merit here, not, not just, we got to give back again. Again, here, it's, it's a grab. Start grabbing money out of business and giving it to somebody else. It's got to stop.
What ideas do you have for spurring business in downtown Las Cruces? Mr. Rowey?
You know, spurring business in downtown is, is, is a, like a sacred cow. I don't think downtown is where the business is going to grow. Right now, Highway Seventy is where business is really coming out. And we need to look at ways that we can spur business growth there. But one idea I do have, it's called the art of retirement. We are one of the best retirement cities in the country to move to, but nobody knows about it. It comes out in a magazine once in a while. But if we start promoting to the north and to the east, sixty-five percent of my businesses are realtor, comes in from out of town. People are coming to the warmth and retiring down here. They bring in vast amounts of retirement dollars, they bring in all their savings accounts, they bring in volunteer efforts, they bring in benefits to the community without costing the community anything. And they also take up the excess inventory of real estate we have. Let's find a way to start bringing new people to the area and get those retirement dollars here as a great place for the retirees to move and an upswing in our medical facilities.
Mr. Sorg?
Thank you. The downtown needs a plaza. That is the most important thing that we have to have down there. We have a funding method, method to do improvements to the downtown. We've already done Main Street. And we need to have a plaza there, a central place. This is the heart of our city. And this is attracting, it will attract tourists, it will attract local people here, and even attract retirees. The retirees are, they, retirees are known to like downtown areas, such as we have in Las Cruces. But we need that plaza. And then we need to finish the rest of the infrastructure after that.
Thank you. What do you think when you hear the phrase "a business-friendly city"? Do you think that the City of Las Cruces is business-friendly? Mr. Sorg?
I would like to think so. I would like to think so. I know there are some complaints about the city government not being business-friendly. I've heard it before. The city council, well, the city staff has implemented a one-stop-shop program in which we can be more friendly to businesses for permitting and the things that businesses need from the city. The one-stop-shop is not finished yet. There are still some people that need to be trained in the city staff. But ninety percent of the people that do business with the city are very satisfied. I want to see it up to ninety-nine percent. And that includes the film industry, too. We have great potential here in this area for developing film and television programming here. And I want to see us work towards that kind of being friendly to the film industry also.
Mr. Rowey?
We have probably the least customer-friendly staff in downtown City Hall that I've, I've seen. There is so many regulations. Recently, somebody tried to get a permit to do a roundabout out by the golf course. The city wouldn't give them a permit because they didn't have an address for the roundabout. This is the kind of stuff, business-friendly, holy smokes, there's a pharmacy that's across kitty corner from our, across the street from City Hall, the library, that's trying to go in there. They bought the property. But the permitting process and, and the zoning process is so antiquated and so slow that it's costing these people thousands and thousands of dollars before they even get out there. It took years to get Walmart going out there on Highway Seventy. This is not a business-friendly city. And if you notice, very few new businesses are coming in. And the other point that I can make is, why haven't we fast-tracked the, the project at the, the old country club? Medical, big business.
And we thank both of our candidates in District Five, Gil Sorg and David Rowey. Thank you very much for being very welcome.
Thank you very much.
And we get to do this all the time. I pick on Gil, but he's a good guy.
We continue now in District Six, and the candidates are Seal Levitino, Mark Cobb, and Curtis Roseman. All of the responses will be sixty seconds, with the exception of that first response, which is up to two minutes, and it comes from Leslie.
Thank you, Brad. Welcome. What are the top three priorities for the City of Las Cruces? Ms. Levitino will begin with you.
I believe the top three priorities for the city are, number one, jobs. Number two, keeping spending at a minimum. And number three, attracting new business to the area to produce a better quality of life for the residents.
Thank you.
Mark Cobb?
I feel that the three top priorities would be to continue the investment in the basic necessities, utilities, public safety, the road system. So, the issue doesn't have to come up in, in the future to, to support those areas. And also, I think that I would like to see the neighborhoods that are going to have some kind of activity affect them, be able to speak up and have a voice in those decisions. And I'd like to see accountability and openness and good customer service with the city.
And Curtis Roseman?
Well, I feel that we need to first look at job creation, being a business to Las Cruces, create more jobs, create higher-paying jobs, look at our tax base of taxes, and look at maybe public safety, to ensure our families are safe in our communities that we live in. Those are the three parts I would work on.
Thank you.
Okay. For our next question, with deficit reductions in the works, federal funding will likely be much more competitive in the future. If you are elected, how will you work to ensure that Las Cruces receives the most federal funding possible? And we begin with Mark Cobb.
I believe that we would need to ensure that we are compliant with the guidelines that would come along with accepting those funds. I believe we would need to be able to show how those funds would be used to, to help all the citizens in the city. And I believe that we would also have to look at maybe merging those funds with private funds, potentially for more expensive projects.
Curtis Roseman?
I think it's crucial that we accept and we go after federal funding and state funding in order to us to maintain our city and probably go forward. I think it's very crucial that we continue receiving and asking for federal funding and state funding.
Seal Levitino?
I think obviously, we have to investigate every avenue for other options, other, other opportunities to get the funds into the city that the city needs. I think this is a perfect opportunity for public and private enterprises to collaborate and partnership, to bring the needed services or whatever the needs are to the city. But obviously, we have to do a much better job of investigating all the various avenues that are open to funding.
Thank you. What do you consider to be the single most important issue to the constituents in your district? Mr. Roseman?
I would say the ability of parks, recreational parks. In our District Six, we don't, there's not very many parks, and the parks that we do have aren't very conducive to exercising, walking, and that maintained properly enough. So, I think my consensus in District Six, talk to me about better park, better park maintenance, more parks in our district.
Seal Levitino?
I would say the primary concern of the districts of District, the residents of District Six is the development of the area. District Six is the fastest-growing area in Las Cruces. The North Rise, Sonoma Ranch, I-70 corridor are bustling at this point, and they're going to continue to grow. And I think there has to be a, a real concern and a concerted effort on the part of the city council to make sure that while development continues, commercial and industrial development continues, that the residential areas are protected, that the values of the property owners are protected. And I think that's the major issue for District Six.
Mark Cobb?
I feel that we need to, to develop a blueprint of the commercial areas so that we can control what is going to be developed. Instead of having strip malls here and there, non-connected, we need to be able to connect all the areas if we can with bike or hike trails. We need to find, we need to plan areas within those shopping centers that attract people so they hang out, kind of, always somebody in the area. And also, try to maybe get some of the facilities like tennis courts and lap swimming on our side of the town, since it is the fastest-growing.
We talked about federal funding. State funding is also a challenge. What are some priorities Las Cruces should fight for when it comes to state funding? And we'll begin with Seal Levitino.
Well, that's a good question. I think the priorities would probably be, again, addressing those issues that affect the quality of life of the residents, whether it be infrastructure, bike routes, different things within the District Six that the residents require. There's been a lot of interest, at least when I'm out walking and talking to people, in having better bus service over on that side. There's a lot of bus service in the center of the city and downtown. But there are a lot of elderly people in our district who would prefer to ride the bus to Albertson's or downtown rather than driving or taking a taxi. So, I think there's, I think there's a lot of things that the state funds could help us with. But I think it has to be directly tied to what are the quality of life issues in our district that need to be addressed.
Mark Cobb?
Well, I would have to agree on the transportation needing to be upgraded to, to sustain the, the growth in the future. We need to have some north-south, east-west corridors that extend further out than we have right now, so that some of the job locations can be reached by individuals, so it would be less expensive for them to commute. I also think perhaps some of the funding needs to be used for water development, getting the water from, you know, the reservoir up so that we can use it. Because we do have water rights that have purchased, but we need to get the water up. And we need to work with the state engineer's office, with the seminars we're having around the state, to provide ample feedback and receive what to do for the water issue.
Curtis Roseman?
No, I think state funding is not only a District Six issue, it's a citywide issue. I think basically, the city could use state funding in many parts of our city to include District Six, the transportation, with programs that are needed in our city to operate our city with. So, I think it's not only a District Six issue, it's a citywide issue for, for state funding.
Thank you. Do you support the increase in the gross receipts tax? And why or why not? Mr. Cobb?
From the start of the discussion of the issue, I supported a one-eighth percent increment. And down the road, as we needed it to increase at one-eighth percentages. I've based that on statistical charts that were given to the public and discussed in seminars around the city to explain why it was going to be needed to be done because of the huge short, revenue shortfall. I don't care how many buildings the city would sell, it would never make that shortfall up in that fifteen-year period of projected one-hundred-and-twenty to one-hundred-and-twenty-four million. Based on the, the charts that I saw, I, I think that we needed to do that, at least at one-eighth percent increments. Had I been part of the city council, maybe I could have been more persuasive than getting the one-eighth percent instead of the three eighths.
Curtis Roseman?
I would not have supported it at all because, number one, the tax increase, we didn't know what's been spent for. The money was going to be used for what? We were never told what the money was, was going to be allocated to use, to be used for. So, at this point, I would not have supported the tax increase.
Seal Levitino?
I agree with Curtis. I would not have supported it. I think there are two issues here. On July thirtieth, the voters of the city and the county made it quite clear in a referendum that they did not want a tax increase. And it seems to me that essentially, what the city council did was they, they thumbed their noses at the, at the taxpayers and said, "We don't care how you voted on July thirtieth. We're going to do what we want." And they did, unnecessarily, in my opinion. If you look at the numbers, the reduction in hold harmless funds does not start until 2015. They're going to start charging the extra three eighths percent, hopefully, for them, January first. I've got fifteen seconds left, but to sum it up, I would not have supported it. We do not need a, a increase in our gross receipts tax.
Las Cruces has many mediums and areas along roadways that are unfinished. These range from very high-profile areas like These range from very high-profile areas like Loman just east of Tellshore to subdivisions. How do you see this issue and how would you address it if you were elected? Curtis Roseman?
You know, I think the builders have a responsibility to complete a project, and it requires the road to be finished or the median to be finished by the builder before the project turned over to the city for approval or for turn over to the city. I think the builder himself must be held accountable to make sure it's completed.
Seal Levatino?
Are you talking about the medians that are on the public roads?
Yes. As an example, one is a very large area on Loman just east of Tellshore.
East of Tellshore. It would seem to me that if there's a median on a public road, then it's up to the city to finish that median. Then, obviously, in lots of other areas, you see local groups, citizens groups, taking over those medians and maintaining them, flowering them and doing what needs to be done to maintain them. And I like that idea. I think it's a great way for different organizations to be involved in the beautification of the city.
Mark Cobb?
What I would do is I would suggest that we zero-scape those areas, which are 1/3 the cost of putting in the irrigation to water the plants. And I think that would probably be a great step forward in that problem.
Thank you. Assuming that the grocery receipt tax increase does go into effect, what would you recommend be done with the funds once collected? Ms. Levatino?
That's one of the things that I was most concerned about because this money is not being designated, it's not being targeted. It should be put into specific accounts to take care of infrastructure, the plumbing, the utilities, all of those services that are necessary to the citizens. At this point, it's not designated. It could be spent on anything, and that can be kind of scary. I think it should be designated and specifically targeted towards those services that need to be maintained and updated and improved.
Mark Cobb?
From the seminar that I attended on at a community college, I seem to remember that the mayor stated that those funds would be put into a separate account, not merged into the general funds. I may be wrong, but I'm pretty sure that he had said that so that they could be, it could be determined later what to be done with them. And we have to keep in mind that this is really not an increase or a new tax. This tax was collected at the register from 2004 back. Since 2004, we've all indirectly paid that tax and payrolled in state income taxes. And it's a nickel a day to a household what it amounts to because the necessities are not taxed, only the non-necessities. The food and the drugs are not taxed. Seniors and the poor have a greater percentage of purchases in those necessities.
Curtis Roseman?
You know, I've heard that the GRT funding was going to the general fund. I feel like I still said, we know where the money is going to, where it's going to be spent, you know, what programs we spent on. There's so many programs that need the money to be spent on those programs. I can't speak to that right now because I don't have that inside information as far as what's lacking in our city as far as programming or infrastructures. But I think that once the money is identified and where it's going to be spent, then it's going to be a good thing. But at this point, we have no idea what's going to be spent.
How should Las Cruces be planning for population growth with a limited water supply? We begin with Mark Cobb.
Well, I believe that we need to have our regional water plan updated as 10 years old for Lower Rio Grand Water User Association. I believe the State Engineers Office seminars around the state, asking feedback and providing data on what they're finding that might be solutions to the water problem. We have, they're chaired by specialists who can, I guess, put together a pecking order of the most efficient ways of conserving water. And then we could also probably follow El Paso's lead and have different tiers for pricing to promote more conservation.
Curtis Roseman?
You know, I believe community outreach, education. First of all, you need to know how much water we have, continuous inventory levels, know where our levels are, you know, daily even. Once that's defined, I think we need to go ahead and have a community outreach, educate our homeowners, our, you know, on watering issues, hollow water, window water. I just think a lot of community outreach is important to educate the people of Las Cruces, how the water can be used.
Seal Levatino?
I think we have to do a couple of things. I think we have to wait for some studies that are currently being conducted to see what the results of those studies are. I think we have to investigate more and better ways to use gray water. And I think we have, it's education. I agree with Curtis. We have to be educating the public on water consumption and water preservation. The other thing is we may have to go at some point, we've got a huge saltwater aquifer underneath us. And at some point, we may have to decide to build a desalination plant. Certainly, that would be, I think, a credible way to go. But I think we need to wait for the studies to come in and see exactly where we are. But certainly, there's lots of ways to address the problem with the gray water and with public education, of course.
Thank you. Do you support a local increase in the minimum wage? And if so, what level of an increase? And in your opinion, which businesses should be impacted? Mr. Roseman?
You know, a minimum wage increase, there's two things about wage increases, okay? There's a entry level, and there's a living cost wage level. I don't think at this time that I would support a minimum increase in, increase wage. I've talked to a lot of businesses in the community, and some of them would be crippled if they were have, they want to pay, they want to pay more money. At this point, they just can't afford to pay more wages. So at this point, I would not, at this point in time, I would not support a minimum wage increase. You look at minimum wages, it does not increase productivity for the business, it does not impact the economy as well as we think it does. So there's a difference between an entry-level wage and a living cost wage.
Seal Levatino?
That's always a tough question because, of course, you want people to be able to be earning a living that they can, that they can support themselves on. But minimum wage jobs were never meant to be career jobs. They were meant to be entry-level jobs where you get experience in how to show up on time, how to do a good job, how to take direction, and all those things that entry-level people learn. My concern with this whole debate is that increasing the minimum wage does not lift anybody out of poverty. Education lifts people out of poverty. Opportunity lifts people out of poverty, not raising the minimum wage 25 cents or 50 cents an hour. So is 50 cents an hour going to help somebody that much? I don't think it is. So I don't support an increase in the minimum wage.
Mark Cobb?
I kind of like the way Albuquerque handled it. They took it to the voters and they approved, I believe it was about a dollar per hour raise. I think it went from 7.50 to 8.50. Every time the publicity hits of having a minimum wage increase, since, for 38 years, there's always the claim that it's going to cause employment to go down, it's going to drive business away. And those were all, have been all unfounded. Recently, the UC Berkeley put out a report on the seven fast-food chains. They made $7.4 billion in profit, but the workers for them utilized $7 billion in taxpayer funding, Medicaid, child help whatsoever. And then the best study is the one regarding Santa Fe's minimum increase has been going on for 10 years.
Okay. That's time. Thank you. Las Cruces has been expanding its city attractions, from an indoor aquatic center to a new museum downtown. How do you see this priority and how would you approach it if you're elected? We begin with Seal Levatino.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Again, Las Cruces has been expanding its city attractions. These include an indoor aquatic center. There's also been a new museum built downtown. How do you see the decision to expand city attractions? How would you approach it if you're elected? Seal Levatino?
I think it's a great idea. I think the more attractions we have within the city, the more people we will attract to come here. And I think this ties in a lot to the convention center and the need to do a much better job of marketing it. I think the city can play a major role in developing family-friendly, people-friendly venues that will attract people to come here to live, to come here to visit, to come here to vacation. And there's lots of ways for the city to do it. The aquatic center is great. I would love to see, I would love to see a lot more attractions, especially family-friendly attractions that would draw people from around the state, Texas, Arizona, to Las Cruces. And with good marketing, I think we could have a boom in visitors.
Mark Cobb?
Well, I feel that we have in our backyard the ingredients to increase tourism with the Oregon National Monument project and then behind the dam, the water life, water fall project. It's supposed to attract some of the most unique birds that you can find. I think there's a potential there to attract a lot of visitors. A study earlier this year done by BBC Capital Research pointed out that the city could get $7 million per year in tourism dollars from the National Monument alone. And that doesn't even calculate what we'd be getting from the waterfall behind the dam.
Curtis Roseman?
You know, I agree with you because I think there's so much opportunity in our city to bring in outside money. I'm always about bringing outside money to impact our economy because when we bring tourism in, it's going to impact the economy. So basically, there's a park right behind Loman, Levy Park, Levy Park, that's 700 acres of land. That's more than Central Park in New York. Central Park in New York, I think, has 680 acres. There's 700 acres right behind Albertson's that could be used for horseback riding, trail walking. There's so much we can use that land for. So I'm with you. Attracting people to Las Cruces with more attractions is essential for our growth.
Thank you. What do you think when you hear the phrase "a business-friendly community"? Do you think that the city of Las Cruces is business-friendly? Mr. Cobb?
I do feel that they are business-friendly, the city is. There's been smashing success with the Economic Gardening Project taken on by some of the city councilors in developing the smaller employers here to hire more people. I believe that our tax structure is probably as attractive as any other city in the state right now. And I think our climate is conducive to that attraction also.
Curtis Roseman?
I think we need to be much more friendlier. I think there's so much opportunity to bring in higher-paying jobs in our community. And I think that we bring in businesses, but sometimes they're not the businesses, well, maybe businesses are important, but I feel like sometimes we miss the opportunity of bringing in higher-paying jobs. Look at manufacturing, look at technology. I feel that we could be a lot more friendlier towards the businesses to be into our city versus them going elsewhere in the country.
Seal Levatino?
I agree. I think we could be much friendlier towards businesses. A few years ago, I represented the company that I worked for and attended the Movida meetings. And it was, it was pretty obvious that there was a lot of frustration. They were working very, very hard to attract businesses to this area, and we're having difficulty doing so because there were a lot of roadblocks that were, that were put up by the, by the city, the city council and some of the departments. So while there may be some friendliness on the part of the city, I don't think it's nearly as friendly as it should be. We could be attracting some, some significant businesses here if we were willing to develop an economic incentives to bring them in. And I, I think we've missed some real opportunities to do that.
What ideas do you have for spurring business in downtown Las Cruces? Curtis Roseman?
There, you know, we're talking about reviving our downtown area. Two, three weeks ago, something came in on the 2005 project. I want to see that project go forward with it. I want to make sure it happens because there's so much opportunity downtown to bring in tourism, to bring in good businesses in the downtown area. So 2005 project, I want to see it continued.
Seal Levatino?
I just, I love the idea of having a vibrant downtown. It's exciting. But I think there's some things that need to be done. I would love to see a much more vibrant residential area down there. I love the idea of some lofts and those sorts of residential areas to bring in people who are going to support a downtown. Obviously, we have to bring in the businesses for them to be willing to go there. We need more restaurants. We need more shops. We need more retail. We need more nightlife down there. And I think if we can attract businesses to go into the downtown area, the main street and some of the side streets off it, we could have a really vibrant, vibrant downtown. But again, I think part of that whole process is to have a much more engaged residential area.
And Mark Cobb?
I feel that we need to have some high-rise development downtown so that there's always someone downtown doing something, you know? Maybe some over 24-hour markets. We need some musical venues. We need to make some of the streets two-way again, not one-way. We'd really need to have a center for town that we used to have with the St. Genevieve Church and Plaza. Most successful downtowns have something like that. We need to have the zoning, multiple zoning so that an individual can do multiple things downtown without having to drive, you know, all over town.
And Leslie has our final question.
Thank you. The perception exists that it's difficult to open or expand a business in Las Cruces due to planning and inspection processes. First of all, do you agree? And second of all, if you were elected, how would you change this perception? Ms. Levatino?
I think there certainly have been instances where people have been frustrated with their attempts to expand their businesses and perhaps develop new businesses. I think that's more departmental than it is something that goes within the purview of the city council. But I think the city council has a responsibility to make sure that the departments are not over-regulating and overburdening our local businesses when they do try to expand or improve their facilities.
Mark Cobb?
Sometimes I think it's okay to be a copycat. I think what I would envision would be a department similar to what Austin, Texas has that's comprised of both city employees and the big industry leaders around town to come up with ways to be more efficient. It's been a smashing success there from what I understand. And I think we need something like that here to facilitate development. I do think up to this point, it has been a departmental problem. From what I hear, there's been a lot of progress made though, and it's, a lot of the stumbling blocks have been removed. You know, but not being a city councillor, I can't go into exact detail about what's been done.
Curtis Roseman?
Well, I agree there has been some problems with getting things done. And I feel like if a project's being done in District 6 or throughout the city, I want to be the voice for that person, for that builder, for that developer, for that person that wants to expand their business. I want them to call upon me so I can have that voice for them, get the process done. Because there has been pauses in the past with things being delayed or being held up.
And we thank the candidates in District 6, Seal Levatino, Mark Cobb, and Curtis Roseman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final race is municipal judge two, and the candidates are Ben Longwell and Kieran Ryan. All of the responses to the questions will be one minute. All of the responses to the questions will be one minute with the exception of the first question. We have two minutes for a response to that, and that question comes from Leslie.
Thank you. Good evening. What is your background makes you a good candidate for this position? And we will begin, I'm sorry.
With Ben.
Ben.
Okay, thank you. I've practiced law here in Las Cruces for 33 years, all of it in part in the municipal court. I've prosecuted in that court. I've served as a municipal judge for four years. And for many, many years, I've been a part of the defense panel in the municipal court. Currently, I handle all cases where competency to go to trial comes into issue. I believe I have extensive and well-rounded experience that prepares me for that office.
And Kieran Ryan.
Yes, I as well was a private attorney here for 20 years down on Main and Picacho. I was a district attorney prior to that, as well as a bankruptcy trustee for seven years. But during a 14-year time period, when I was in private practice, I was an alternate municipal judge here in Las Cruces at the municipal court wherein the judges, when they weren't there, I would step in for them and I would hear conflicting cases. I did that for 14 years. When Judge Locatelli left the bench three years ago, I stood in his shoes as a de facto municipal judge during that time period, still as an alternate. But a year and a half ago, the city council, after putting out a candidacy, candidacy list, 11 candidates applied for the, the job through the city council, and the city council appointed me a year and a half ago to be full-time municipal court judge. So my qualification, I suppose, would be my experience. I've been there for 15 years, and so I'm very much experienced in what happens in municipal court.
Rather than establishing an appointment system, Las Cruces Municipal Court requires those challenging traffic citations to line up outside and hope that they get to see a judge, often standing for hours. Of course, this means that people with inflexible work schedules do not have equal access to justice in Las Cruces. What are your thoughts on this? And we begin with Mr. Ryan.
Well, I think that's a valid, valid concern. And I think a couple of years ago, we were having particular problems with a lot of people lining up downtown. And typically, you'll see that on Monday, I suppose, as you would at El Paso Electric. But it was kind of winding around. And so now, as municipal court judge two, we don't have much decisions as far as administrative decisions go with respect to the court. However, the court did implement a new rule where we opened up at 7:30 instead of 8:00. We stay up, open until 5:30. And I hear public arraignments at 9 o'clock. So we're getting all of them now in there, and there's not so much of a line anymore. However, having said that, we probably do need new facilities for the 100,000 population that we have right now in Las Cruces. It'd probably be a good thing.
Mr. Longwell.
Thank you. What people don't realize is that the municipal judge can't do anything unless he has the person before him, but also has the complaint or the traffic citation that the person was issued. Got to have both of those. And unfortunately, it does take time. We do not have advance notice of who's coming and when. And when someone arrives, the clerks have to find the paperwork and match it to the person before they can see the judge. I think they're, they're doing that fairly efficiently at the present time.
Thank you. Gentlemen, municipal court deals in cases that have some fines assigned to them, typically about $500 or less. As a municipal judge, how would you decide the amount of the fine when it is your discretion? Mr. Longwell?
There are some factors that play into that. If it's a traffic fine, a first-time offender can normally be granted some kind of a remission of part of that fine. We can suspend part of it. Someone who's having a problem obeying the traffic laws, however, we may be more inclined to just impose the standard fine and leave it at that.
Mr. Ryan.
Yeah, you know, every case is different, and every person that comes before you is different. And they all have different circumstances. You know, I get people that, you know, 80 years old, the first ticket they've ever had in their entire lives. And so you can't obviously treat that person the same as you would somebody that has like a very, a lot of tickets. In, in municipal court, it is a petty misdemeanor court, maximum fine $500, 90 days in jail. But with respect to fines, that is, those are set maximums. And if it's the first offense, typically, it's a 90-day deferred, and there's a court cost. If it's the 20th offense, then typically, a fine is imposed on that. And so it kind of depends on the case and the individual. Everyone's different. But we, we try to be fair and make it a, a very rapid experience and something that they don't want to come back for.
Another penalty question now. Municipal court deals with cases that typically have potential jail terms of 90 days or less. As a municipal judge, how would you decide the length of a jail term when you have discretion? And we begin with Mr. Longwell.
Well, there are numerous factors. First of all, you have to take a look at what harm was done, the seriousness of the offense. And this, of course, assuming that someone has pled guilty or is found guilty at trial. And then another big driver of that is going to be recidivism. If a person have a problem obeying the law, and you may have to impose a jail sentence under those conditions.
Okay, Mr. Ryan.
Yeah, there again, every case is different. Every person that comes before you has a different set of circumstances. No judge wants to incarcerate anyone. However, the maximum penalty for petty misdemeanors with incarceration is a $500 fine or 90 days in jail, or both. Also, you can get put on probation. Now, it really depends on what the, the infraction is and depends on the history, criminal history of the person. If you have a person that, shoplifting, for example, first-time shoplifting ever, you know, you treat that person differently than you would someone that says, this is number 24 shoplifting, and there's some serious problems there and that you, that need to be addressed. But if you think about collectively, if all the citizens were in, of Las Cruces, were there in that courtroom, how would they rule on this? It kind of helps you along in making a decision.
Thank you. Gentlemen, what has been the most effective methods, in your opinion, for improving court procedures and efficiencies? And what other methods would you suggest? Mr. Ryan?
To improve court efficiency? I'd say by having enough staff that'll accommodate the, the people that come in there and by having these cases come up, you know, you call the case and you deal with the matter and you do it rapidly, you know? Justice delayed is justice denied. And so you want to make sure that the people that come in front of you get justice quickly and they get access to the justice system, and there's no delay in that matter. I think that's something that needs to be fostered.
Mr. Longwell.
Thank you. I think the staff currently is doing a pretty good job of keeping the flow moving. You really do not want a court to be too efficient, okay? If I was in court, if I had a ticket or some kind of complaint against me, I would like to be assured that the judge is going to take whatever time is necessary to fairly and impartially consider both sides of the story and spend his time thinking about it, giving a fair ruling.
What do you perceive as the greatest obstacles to justice, if any? Mr. Longwell?
Obstacles to justice? There's a lot of those out there. I would have to say people.
Okay, Mr. Ryan.
Well, I would say that the greatest obstacle to justice for individuals who seek justice or individuals who come to court looking for justice would be those individuals that forget about coming to court, or they have a court hearing, they don't come, they'll forget, or they have other matters, or they've left town, and then they, they, then we have to reset it, okay? So that delays the matter. Or we have to put a warrant out for their arrest if they don't show up for trial, or something along those lines. I think those are the greatest impediments to justice itself, that delay that's occurred on an individual basis, I believe.
Thank you. What do you think about the growing prison population? And what response should society have to overcrowding in our prisons? Mr. Ryan?
Well, I think that's a question probably for the legislatures, but, you know, as a judge that has to sentence people to jail sometimes, incarcerate people, you know, typically, if a person gets sentenced to jail, what is it for? Well, it's punitive, number one. It is rehabilitative, number two. And in, in the sense that you sentence somebody to 30 days in jail for their sixth shoplifting, why are they shoplifting? You know, we don't have the resources to look into the whys and the wherefores of somebody, you know, shoplifts. Perhaps it's because they're a heroin addict, they shoplift to sell what they, what they shoplift. Okay, so in a sense, that's rehabilitative, but it's, it's really jail, and so it's a hard way to be rehabilitated. But yeah, that's not really an easy solution to that, that problem.
Mr. Longwell.
Thank you. First of all, the municipal court is not part of that problem. We do not send people to prison. Looking at the broader picture, sociological factors, in my opinion, account for a lot of prison population, simply because people may perceive they have very little alternative to make money other than to do that illegally. Another big factor, I think, is drug laws that carry mandatory sentencing. Most of that's going to be in the federal system.
Well, timely response there. Do you feel that the war on drugs has been effective or ineffective, and why? And we begin with Mr. Longwell.
Well, this is something that has been going on since the Pure Food and Drug Act, I think, of 1903, okay? We've been in the trenches for a long time battling the so-called illegal drugs, including at one time alcohol, okay? My own opinion is it ought to be rethought.
Mr. Ryan.
Well, I think we've thrown enough resources at that, that particular war and, and quite a few resources. And we've got far more prisons today than we had 20 years ago. And I think if statistics bear it out, probably 30% of the prison population is for drug cases. I, or even more, you know? But as Mr. Longwell indicated, for our purposes, you know, we deal with the Doñanay County Detention Center. But by and large, you know, you kind of see a lot of that in there as well. I don't think we're winning the war on drugs. I think it's kind of a stalemate at this point.
Thank you. Gentlemen, I serve as chair of the Greater Las Cruces Chamber of Commerce. So although it may not be a direct tie, I'd like to ask a business question, if you don't mind. The city imposes many ordinances, dust ordinances, lighting ordinances, that impact our business community. I'd just like to hear your general philosophy on those ordinances. They may or may not come before you if they're violated from our community. But just your general thoughts on, do you, on the impact of those ordinances on business? Mr. Ryan?
Well, I can speak to you from a person that wore the hat of having a private law office for 20 years. And, and then I can also speak for you as a municipal judge. I think that a lot of these laws are pretty good. We need to have laws that, you know, keep, for example, we, I couldn't comment directly on specific cases, but we have business license required. And also, more recently, we've been getting a lot of what we call nuisance, prohibited nuisance cases, meaning that there's too many weeds on your property, and those things need to be, after the rains, we see a big flurry of that. And we never really concerned too much about that, except the people that we see all the time. But typically, we'll see somebody there once in their lifetime, perhaps, you know, for a violation in business.
Mr. Longwell.
Well, we don't see too many businessmen in the municipal court, as a general rule. The content of the ordinances is not up to the municipal judges to decide. The city council lays that down for us. We are basically the enforcement arm, and we have to interpret ordinances in order to fit the situation that has been shown by evidence or by plea before us. I can recall some impacts. Many years ago, we had a new sign administrator, and this person seemed determined to shut down as many business signs as possible. And my understanding of it is most of the businessmen that were impacted, they just simply took down their signs instead of coming in to have it adjudicated in municipal court as to whether they were legal or not. And then, let's see, one day, I was presiding, and at arraignment, here comes Popeye's Chicken. Someone had filed a complaint against them because they did not like the odor of the chicken frying. So occasionally, there is an impact.
What has been the greatest accomplishment in your legal career? Mr. Longwell.
Well, I would guess staying in business for 33 years. I've had occasion to become involved with a program called Legal Referral for the Elderly. And this is run by the State Bar. Old persons can call in and get a referral to a lawyer who will help them either at a reduced fee or at no charge at all. A while back, a retiree volunteered with the State Bar to track the number of hours that attorneys were spending on this program. And this person would call me after a referral and get that information. And the next thing you know, I was awarded the 2009 Robert LaFollette Pro Bono Publico Award by the State Bar. I was kind of proud about that.
Mr. Ryan.
Well, I think as a private attorney, probably you get great satisfaction in winning cases for your clients. And, and so I think I got a great deal of satisfaction out of that. Winning cases on appeal for, up to the state Supreme Court, that's always satisfactory. I think, but as a judge, one of the things that gives me pleasure is the remedies that I've sought for graffiti in the city. And so you don't see a lot of graffiti, and that affects businesses as well. When, one of my remedies is that when the person is put on, caught, and they plead guilty or found guilty, they get put on probation for a six-month period of time. During that six-month time period, they have to take the graffiti off the wall that they just put up there. And then they mon, they have to monitor that wall for six months. During the six-month time period, make sure nobody else puts graffiti on that wall. Because if they do, they have to clean it off. And if they don't clean it off, that's a violation of the probation, and they can be put back on the wall for another six months, or there's jail time. So at any rate, that's, that's one of the accomplishments we have, we have zero recidivist rate.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you believe the current system for disciplining lawyers and judges is effective? Why or why not? Mr. Ryan?
I think it's very effective, very effective. You know, lawyers are the only profession in the United States, or anywhere in the world for that matter, that, that, that self-discipline themselves. No other body takes, you know, is ultimately disciplined by that body itself. Lawyers are. And in New Mexico in particular, there's, we have very stringent rules for discipline, very stringent rules, judges as well, judicial standards. And so we are very much, I think, the, the system that they have right now for disciplining judges, judges are disciplining attorneys, is very effective. And we read cases all the time in the barb, and when we get them, you know, about judges have been disciplined, or this, that, the other thing. And I'm proud to say that- And I'm proud to say that in the last 15 years, I've never had a complaint, so, but I think it worked quite well.
Mr. Longwell.
Thank you. Once a judge or an attorney has a complaint lodged against them in the system, I think it generally does a pretty good job. However, there is an inherent weakness that's always going to be there. And if I can take just a short while to explain, imagine yourself as an attorney, and you're in front of a judge, and you think that the judge has done something that he should be disciplined for. It's a long and hard thought as to whether to send in a complaint about that judge. And likewise, if you're opposing another attorney in a case and you believe they've acted inethically, if you report it, the question is inevitably going to come up. Are we reporting it because it's something wrong that was done? Or are we reporting this to try to gain an advantage for a client in a case? It's an inherent weakness.
Thank you.
How do you feel about alternative sentencing programs such as drug treatment instead of going to jail? And how would you approach them as a judge? And we begin with Mr. Longwell.
Well, over the past 20 or 25 years, the court has moved in that direction, and I think it's healthy. There has to be a balance between correcting individual behavior on one hand, and on the other hand, not morphing into some kind of a all-purpose social services agency. What the court does presently is if a case appears to be appropriate for alternative sentencing, the judge can order an evaluation together with an interview to see whether that is the case, and if so, what program may be effective. I think the court is doing about the best it can in this regard at the present time.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes, alternative sentencing, when we get an individual, it looks like they might have a problem with alcohol or substance, we order an evaluation through the probation department. They interview the individual, find out what's going on in their life. Now, mind you, it has to be done within the strictures and confines of the dollars. That's basically what it comes down to. What is affordable? What can the court, what does the court get money-wise to do that? And they are limited. And so a lot of times, we refer them out to programs that they can, they can go to, maybe La Frontera, or maybe it's, Aspen is another program that we send them to. But it's, alternative programming is very, or sentencing is something that we do practice in municipal court when we have the availability of the funds to do that.
Gentlemen, as a follow-up, you both mentioned that you are, have been self-employed as attorneys in our community. What advice would you give to young people that might be interested in starting a business in Las Cruces? What maybe is the thing that was most impactful, the best advice you heard that you might share with some young people who are considering that in our community? Mr. Longwell?
Well, one of the stops should probably be at a lawyer's office to develop some sort of a relationship. Other than that, I guess it's the standard business-type advice that you might expect, you know, have a good product or have a good service, market it right, those kinds of things.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan.
Well, there's a lot of ingredients to be successful. One of them is not to be lazy. You know, you got to get up and you got to go. And that's just the way it is if you plan on being successful. And that's a common denominator, successful people are, they're not lazy. They like the work. And also, I always tell somebody when they start a private business, learn how to say no. Because you're going to get a lot of people coming to your door wanting to sell you this, sell you that, do this, make it this better, make that better. Learn how to be frugal, learn how to be, in the very beginning, you need to just keep your mind on it and come to work early, work on Saturdays. I always work on Saturdays in private practice. Why? The phone doesn't ring, and you get a lot done on Saturday.
Final question. Who are your judicial role models and why? Begin with Mr. Ryan.
My judicial role models, there are some Supreme Court justices that I admire greatly because of their writing. I think Justice White is one of them. Certainly Abraham Lincoln is someone you have to admire as an attorney in, you know, writing briefs back then, the way they had to do that, back when they got paid by the word essentially. That's why you have a lot of words in documents of a lawyer. But I think the first chief justice, Justice John Marshall, is somebody that I admire. And that was when there wasn't television, there wasn't anything, there was just written, the written word. And that is something that people got together and talked about, and they're very, very astute at the law because they really, that's all they could do is read it and think about it. Yeah, so.
All right, and Mr. Longwell.
My answer would be Judge Jean Francini. He was a district judge in Albuquerque, and a case got to his desk where there was a minor traffic accident followed by a fistfight. And someone who was not involved in that got out of their car, pulled out a pistol, and fired it into the air just to stop the fight, okay? Judge Francini held in his good conscience, he could not send that person to prison with a mandatory firearm enhancement, okay? He refused to do that. The state appealed, the Supreme Court sent it back to him and told him he was required to send that defendant to prison. The judge resigned his judgeship instead of doing that. Now, that's judicial integrity.
An interesting story. Ben Longwell and Kieran Ryan, municipal judge candidates, thank you both very much.
Thank you very much.
For being with us.
Thank you.
Thank you at home as well, and thank you to Leslie Cervantes. She is the chair of the Greater Las Cruces Chamber. It's been great doing the program with you.
Thank you, Fred. I've enjoyed it very much.
You've enjoyed it very much as well.
Good.
Thank you so much at home, and make sure you vote on Tuesday.